Jason Blair, Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
Tonight, would you please stand with me for pledge allegiance. I have a couple of proclamations, but we'll do this first. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. My first proclamation here is whereas emergency medical services are vital public service, as members of emergency medical services teams are provided, are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services teams consist of emergency medical technicians, emergency physicians, emergency nurses, paramedics, firefighters, educators, and administrators who engage in hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills, and whereas the citizens of Moore benefit daily from the knowledge and skills of these highly trained individuals and value accomplishments of emergency medical service providers, and whereas injury prevention and the appropriate use of emergency medical services system will help reduce the national healthcare cost. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Glenn Lewis, Mayor of the City of Moore, Oklahoma, urge all citizens of Moore to publicly join me in proclaiming the week of May 28 through May 26, 2018, as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Moore. And I'm going to present this to Eddie Simpson. Appreciate you being here.
Thank you, Mayor. We very much appreciate it, too.
Thank you.
You're okay to address the council.
Oh, absolutely, please.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and Council. Norman Regional and IMSTAT has been operating EMS in Moore for little over two and a half years, and in that time, we've made just under 12,000 responses and transported just under 8,500 patients. Last year, we had 4,700 calls, just in that one year. We work very closely with your police and fire departments, which are outstanding, and we're very honored to have the privilege to serve your community along with the other public safety agencies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Now I have a presentation by J. Ray's Pence, Chief of the Year Award to Moore Fire Chief Gary Bird from the Oklahoma Fire Chiefs Association, Executive Director Kent Langley.
Mayor Lewis and council members, City Manager Mitchell, I appreciate the time that you're giving us here this evening to recognize your fire chief. I know it looks like I brought a little entourage with me, the guys in the maroon jacket, but on behalf of the Oklahoma Fire Chiefs Association, I want to say thank you once again for being here. We want the citizens of Moore and the elected officials to know exactly what they have in Chief Moore. At our council, or our conference last month, each year we have our annual conference, it was down in Lawton, we awarded the J. Ray Pence Award. The J. Ray Pence Award is the highest honor of the Oklahoma Fire Chiefs Award. It was previously known at its inception in 1999 as the Chief Officer Leadership Award. In 2005, it was renamed after the late J. Ray Pence, Stillwater Fire Chief. To give you a little bit about maybe what the award means and everything, what it's for is J. Ray Pence was an innovator way before his time. He was always willing to improve things, and he would implant ideas and challenge people to step to greater heights. He was an outstanding leader. The Pence Award is not automatic every year. We take nominations. The nominations are considered by previous award winners. I think it's important at this time to let you also realize that in its history of 20, almost 20 years, a little bit over, Moore is the only second community that has had two of their fire chiefs receive this award. Chief Stevens received it, I believe, in 1999, so that's also an honor for your community. I'm going to have our president this year, Sean Douglas of the Claremore Fire Department, come and hit some of the highlights that were in the nomination form that the committee
Thank you for the opportunity to present this award or remind you how great of a fire chief that you have. Our board is here in support of Chief Bird, and there's a lot of stuff that was said about him during the process that we had to consider, but Chief Bird is always looking for new ways to improve the department to better serve our citizens. You recently had a ISO change to Class II, which is to be commended. He's done a lot of work over the years in the department for funding, grants, a lot of behind-the-scenes work over his career. His work ethic is second to none. His great character and high morals make him a great chief and community leader, and they feel he's deserving of this prestigious award. Chief Bird has displayed extraordinary leaderships by gaining buy-in with his department when making changes that need to be made. He's improved the relationship with Union by opening up communications and sharing his vision. He's always been, had an open-door policy and is willing to listen to anybody's concerns or idea. And for those of us from the Chiefs' board, he's been a good mentor, somebody to speak with when we've needed help as well. So we'll present, represent the J. Ray Pence Award, Chief Bird. Thank you.
This was quite a surprise when I received this in Lawton at the Chiefs' conference, to say the least. This group of guys back here, they're outstanding and the best group I've ever seen. They're the ones that makes this possible. I didn't do this by myself. It comes from these guys back here. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a great honor. Item E is Presentation by Recognizing Dispatchers, and I have a certificate, and I get to present this letter of recognition and certificate of appreciation to dispatchers by Tammy Cullen. As I say, I saw you a while ago. And I'd like to read this. It's for professional dedication and professional services to the City of Moore, assisting those in need. Emergency service is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. Thank you. Appreciate the job, you. Thank you. Item two is the Consent Docket. Item A is approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held May 7, 2018. Item B, receive the minutes of the regular parks board meeting held March 6, 2018. Item C is approve resolution number 89818, establishing the 911 emergency telephone fee rate for the calendar year 2019. Item D is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of $1,733,275.21. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Thank you both. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number three is consider approval of the library services facilities and maintenance agreement with Pioneer Library System for fiscal year 2018-2019. It's on page 66 of your packet.
Mayor and Council, this is just the renewal of the standard contract that we've had with Pioneer Library Systems for a number of years. We just, we're just approving it a little earlier this time than we do normal. Recommend approval.
Okay.
Make a motion, we approve.
All right. Thanks, sir. Thank you. Motion and a second. Any other discussion on this? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number four is consider approval of a new job description for the position of compliance specialist and approve placement and pay grade 109 of the city's salary table approved by city council on June 20, 2016. This is effective July 1, 2016. Shouldn't that be 2018?
No, the salary table.
Oh, the salary table, okay.
The salary table is approved back in 2016.
I was thinking the job, okay. And let's see. That's it.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, we have two vacant positions in the capital planning department. We're going to combine those into one since we're through the vast majority of our infrastructure projects. We feel like we can do the work that's needed with one position, so in doing that, we had to amend the job description just a little bit. We'll be contracting out some environmental monitoring, as well as the internal and external compliance will be done by this one person. So that's the significant changes, so we'd ask your approval, please.
Make a motion, we approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
And Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number five is consider approval of a new job description for the position of project grants manager and approve placement and pay grade 117 of the city's salary table approved by city council on June 20, 2016.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council, we changed the job title to reflect more what this person will be doing. We added and adjusted some job duties. It's also in the capital planning department, so we'd ask your approval for this position.
Motion to approve. All right. Thank you. Second. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote, please?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. Item number six, consider awarding RFP number 1803-00 Mobile Command Communications Vehicle to Nomad Global Communications Solutions Incorporated in the amount of $571,012.91 as the lowest and most responsible bidder.
Mayor and Council, good evening. This is the budgeted item for the mobile command post vehicle. We received three proposals, two from one company, one differing in the number of slide-outs and a proposal from a second company. The tabulation for this is on page 90, which shows that we are recommending approval of the Nomad Global Communications proposal that has three slide-outs, which is the center one of the three that you see there, with some options that we had asked for, that our fleet maintenance people had asked for, and a couple of things that we had subtracted out, quite frankly, to bring the cost down just a little bit, and these are things that we can add back in later, you know, after we have the vehicle. So we have to answer any questions you might have.
What color is it going to be? It looks gray in here.
The, we haven't really decided, but it will come base white, and then we can, you know, add striping as we wish. A lot of that will be determined.
Out of the place to park it and all that, out of the weather?
Yes. When we built the garage building back behind the public safety center, we made sure that we had a place big enough for a vehicle of this nature.
Okay. And this will be better than the current vehicle we have, the bread truck?
It will have more workstations.
All right.
And a little bit more communications capability.
And I don't remember, this is within the budgeted amount that we budgeted for this?
Yes, this is, this is part of the half-cent sales tax that was on the ballot back in 2014.
How many years have we been working on this, since 99?
Well, not quite that long, but yes.
A long time.
Yes.
This is, this is exciting. I'm ready to do this. Anybody make a motion?
Yeah, I would make a motion that we approve.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any other, any other discussion on this item? If not, would you call for the vote?
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll recess the city council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item number seven is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Public Works Authority meeting held May 7, 2018. Item B is approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of $544,255.27.
Move to approve.
All right. Thank you. We have a motion and a second, and it's a consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management meeting. Item number eight is consent docket. Item A is accept the minutes of the regular Moore Risk Management meeting held May 7, 2018. Item B, approve and ratify claims and expenditures for FY 2017, 2018 in the amount of $229,377. Make a motion, we approve. All right. Thank you.
Sir.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. It's consent docket. Would you call for the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. Item carries. At this time, we'll recess the Moore Risk Management meeting and convene the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting. Item nine is roll call. We call the roll, please.
Glenn Lewis.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here.
Danielle McKenzie.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Item 10 is the consent docket. Item A, receive and approve the minutes of the regular Moore Economic Development Authority meeting held April 16, 2018.
Move to approve.
Second.
Call for the vote, please.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes. We'll recess the Moore Economic Development Authority meeting and reconvene the city council. All right. Thank you. Let the record reflect that members that were present are still present. Item number...
Sorry.
Why, get an introduction? That's pretty cool.
It's like a Disney movie.
Okay. Item number 11 is new business. Item A is citizens forum for items not on the agenda. There's no one signed up. Would anyone like to speak?
Would you like to speak?
It's sorry. I speak.
Item B is items from the city council.
Hey, Brooks, do you have an update on the renovations that are going on at the old Station 3 on Eastern, which will be where the ambulances are stationed? I've drive by there and I've seen the parking lot all.
It's torn out.
Torn up. And so how's that going?
My understanding is it's moving right along. I'll get some follow-up information on the expected completion date for you.
All right.
I recently did a post on Facebook just asking if you could approve one thing in Moore. What would it be? Got over 400 replies. So right now, I'm going through and tallying them up. I'll give that information to Brooks and give it to you guys. That is right now, I've gone through 350 of them. It seems like people's main concern really is our bike lanes, sidewalks. Fixing roads, and then 19th Street, everyone seems to be upset by the synchronizing of the lights. I don't know if we can do much about that or not, but eventually, Brooks, I'll try to meet with you sometime in the near future, and then I'll get you guys all a copy and kind of give you a tally of how many people spoke up for which items. Just about 10 categories.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Stan, but I think the synchronizing of the lights, it's when, the problem is when there's a train or something and everybody floods 19th Street. So it's not that the lights are off, it's just when there's that flood of traffic or it's the busiest part of the day, it just can't handle that.
I think that might just be an education issue responding to the citizens and explaining to them how it works.
There's a lot of traffic on it.
Yeah. And a lot of actually were the underpass, so I'm happy we have that on the ballot. And of course, that also answers a lot of the concerns with roads being repaired and the sidewalks and bike lanes, so.
And encourage people that if there is a road that needs repaired, let us know, because a lot of times we just don't know about it, and our city is great at getting out there and fixing it when we know about it.
We have a lot of streets when you start driving over all of them. There's a lot of streets in there. You can tell you that.
We won't do it all at once.
Right.
Yeah.
But at least it is on the list.
We got to pay ourselves financially, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Any items from the city manager and press manager?
Yeah, a couple of things, Mayor and Council. Last Friday night, we started off our movie in the park season, and so the Justice League was the movie, and had a nice turnout, had a great evening for it, so glad to see that that's moving along. Also, last week, we had the Crime Stoppers Chili Cook-Off, and so that was a successful event, raised about $500. And to get back to the traffic concerns on 19th Street, the letting of the contract for the 34th Street overpass is scheduled on June the 14th, so we're getting close to the finish line, and construction should start approximately 60 days after that. So I know it's been a, been a long process, but we're, we're almost there, so it's on hand.
Okay. Just real quick also, Todd, I want to thank your team on how good the parks are looking lately, with green grass. It's been great.
Yeah, it looks, it really does look good.
All right. Next item is item 12, executive session. Section 307, Title 25, Oklahoma statutes permits the public body to meet an executive session for certain specified reasons under certain specified conditions. It is the opinion of the city attorney that the city council may consider and adopt a motion to meet an executive session to discuss the following items. Item A, discuss and consider taking possible action regarding the city manager's evaluation employment benefits as authorized by 25 Oklahoma Statute 307B-1. That's it? Okay. Would you call for the vote, please? Or wait, a motion?
Motion to adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Yes, thank you. I knew there was something we were missing. Now would you call for the vote, please?
Now. Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Glenn Lewis.
Yes. All right, we are adjourned to executive session.[1273.58]
Mark Ham?
Here.
Danielle McKenzie?
Here.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
And Glenn Lewis.
Yes. We are reconvened from executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the extension of the employment contract for Brooks Mitchell as city manager pursuant to the terms authorized.
All right, second. We have a, a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
Mark Ham?
Yes.
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Here.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
And Glenn Lewis.
Yes. We are reconvened from executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the extension of the employment contract for Brooks Mitchell as city manager pursuant to the terms authorized.
All right, second. We have a, a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Here.
Adam Webb?
Here.
And Glenn Lewis.
Yes. We are reconvened from executive session. Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to authorize the extension of the employment contract for Brooks Mitchell as city manager pursuant to the terms authorized. All right, second. We have a, a motion and a second. Would you call for the vote please?
Danielle McKenzie?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Here.
And Glenn Lewis.
Yes. All right, we are adjourned to executive session.